I think we have all technology issues sorted out. We have a good crowd on Zoom. It's 6:05. We're actually getting an early start compared to previously. We're getting this down pretty good. So let's call this meeting the order. I just want to let everybody know online that we're muted, or you guys are muted, but once we get to your item, we'll unmute. Well, we'll unmute everybody. You'll still remain muted. You can unmute yourself at that point. Our first, well, we have real call. So present in person, we have Jay Bemke that Kube Shack, Steve Coath, myself, Shane Blazer. We have Jennifer Gosick, the clerk here, Scott Kellogg, Dean Veneman, and we have some other staff from the departments. Online, we have representing for city council. We have Jay Catna and Joe Zerflu and various department heads. First item on agenda is pledge allegiance and silent prayer in lieu of invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. The next item is a wastewater award presentation. Mr. Terry or whoever.
So I think I'll give a little bit of background quick on it before we turn over to Lynn, who actually will do the presentation. Just a little background on Derek and kind of where this all came from. So basically, in 2017, when I took over as superintendent of the wastewater department, one of the first initiatives that Joe Terry had tasked me with was kind of trying to figure out some of the severe settleability problems we had at the facility. And what the settleability problems were stemming from was a zugliel slime bulking problem. And basically, what slime bulking is, is your microorganisms that are doing your treatment at the facility, when they're stressed out, for whatever reason it may be, they secrete a slime in their, from their body, and it forces them to basically suspend and float as opposed to settling. And activated such treatment process, its secondary treatment process relies on settleability. So when you don't have that, you have an effective fraction of the capacity you should have at the facility. You know, we had process equipment that was running well outside of, as it spec, chemical usages. So our expenditures for our operational budget were way out of whack. So we had some issues that needed to be addressed. And one of the first places I looked at to try to start sorting through the issues and how we were going to resolve them was the laboratory. You know, when you're looking at a wastewater laboratory, you have to make sure that your data is accurate and precise. You have to make sure that your sampling protocols are representative. You know, if you don't have good data out of your laboratory, you're never going to be able to solve your issues. Ninety to 95% of the decisions we make at the facility are based on the data your laboratory is putting out. So, you know, when I started looking into the laboratory, I noticed some things that seemed a little bit odd, some methodology that was outdated, and just some data that didn't seem to quite line up like it should. So we were going to start by overhauling the laboratory. And when the chief operator at the time was going to be retiring in a few months, I knew that that hiring replacement was going to be a critical one to help myself and the staff at the facility solve the issues we were having. So when I saw Derek's name come across as an applicant for the position, I was excited because I had worked with him at the city of Stevens Point, knew he was a very talented laboratory analyst, as well as a good process operator as well. So I knew that, I was excited because I thought he'd be one that could come in and between the two of us and the staff, we might be able to solve some of these issues. And pretty much right out of the gate, Derek had some excellent suggestions for additional sampling we needed to do. You know, the DNR requires that you sample influent wastewater and effluent wastewater, and that's it, which basically tells you what's coming into your facility and what's leaving, not anything that's going on within the facility. So that's on the operators of the plant to, to basically, you know, test the different processes and figure out what's happening. So Derek, you know, suggests, let's start looking at some of our side stream treatments. Let's start figuring out where the nutrient balances and loads are in the facility. Let's put in a primary effluent sampler. So a lot of good ideas that led to more data that could help us solve this problem. You know, other things that Derek suggested were some updated technologies in the laboratory, buying a new photo spectrometer, which is a piece of equipment that can test a wide array of parameters and different concentrations. So, you know, he basically revamped the whole lab with new methodology, rewrote almost all of the standard operating procedures in the laboratory manual, and just really made it so that we had rock solid accurate data out of the laboratory, which is exactly what we needed to try to solve some of these issues. So, you know, Ben, he's taken on a huge, a huge task by being the chief operator, helping oversee day-to-day operations of the operators, helping with the process and its control, being the laboratory manager, training all the staff on all this new SOPs and new methodology. You know, so it's been a very, very impressive start to his career here with the city, which is why I nominated him for this award, which is the Water Environment Federation Laboratory Excellence Award. So that's an award that goes out to one person in Wisconsin, Minnesota, or Illinois. So it's a prestigious award, and I'm very proud that he was selected for it. So he deserves a lot of credit. And, you know, I just, wastewater isn't, isn't a field where recognition is always easy to come by. A lot of times, if you don't hear about the wastewater plant or smell the wastewater plant, it means you're doing a good job and people don't care. But this is, this is a nice situation where, you know, he can be recognized for some excellent work. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lynn.
Well, thank you for that. I'm with Roddick, I'm the president of the Modern Energy Association, the National National Professional Association. Derek and everybody else in the state of water environment. And it's my pleasure to get to join you, be able to present this award, which is a national award, but to be able to present it locally. The Lab Analyst Award recognizes individuals for outstanding professionalism, performance, and contributions to the water quality analysis profession. And of course, it's my honor to get to present this award to Derek Boosberg. Is Derek with us today? Is he online? I don't see his, I don't think I see his name in one of the squares, but.
Yeah, I'm here.
I do want, okay, all right, great, great, great. Derek has been a member of Central States Water Environment Association, which is the Wisconsin, Minnesota, Illinois chapter, if you will, of the National Association since 2016, and his first involvement was with the operations committee for the Wisconsin section three years ago. There's a licensed operator in Wisconsin, and as you know, is the chief operator and laboratory manager for the city of Wisconsin Rapids. He's got a true passion for this industry and is able to obtain the most efficient and effective way to treat wastewater. You've already heard the story of what he did to really transform a difficult situation for Wisconsin Rapids. On that, you know, he has conferences such as Wisconsin Water Operators Association and the Central States Water Environment Association meetings to try to keep current with the latest technology and techniques. And that's certainly an important part of his ability to stay on top of things. He's also participated in the Wisconsin Wastewater Association Operator Competition. And if you've never seen this, I really encourage you to try to find a, if you see it, it's quite something. Derek started at the Wisconsin Rapids wastewater treatment plant, and since he's been there, he's implemented all kinds of, implemented all kinds of new protocols that you've heard about, as well as updating the manuals, the standard operating procedures, all the things that keep things humming. He's interested in new technology, as you, and his attention to detail and strong background in water chemistry are key traits that make him an excellent laboratory analyst and make leading by example just second nature for him. I understand that when he's not at work, he enjoys hunting, fishing, and four-wheeling with his wife, and that he has recently become a new father, and that's really quite something. On LinkedIn, when this award was announced on LinkedIn, in addition to these kinds of comments, there was also a note here that Derek is a bright newcomer to the environmental protection field, which I think is really, when you say that about him, that he is a bright newcomer. He really deserves, he's earning recognition well beyond the city of Wisconsin Rapids, and I couldn't be prouder of, than to be able to present this award today. My understa, I don't have the physical award. My understanding is the physical award is there with you and that.
No, it's like.
Yeah, anyway, thank you for letting me join you for the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
I'll talk to you in a second. I started that.
Anything further?
Nothing further from me.
Oh, thank you, Lynn. Derek, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Central States for giving me this award. It's a very humbling award, and I definitely didn't expect it, nor would I change anything to try to get it. I'd just like to work hard and improve the facility. I really enjoy my job. I want to thank the Rapid staff for any time I want to kind of have a crazy idea that they follow along with it. And I want to thank Ryan for doing a lot of the things, going through with a lot of the things I want to try, even if he doesn't agree with it or not, because if it wasn't for him doing that, none of these things would have happened.
Thank you, Derek. We appreciate it, and we congratulate you also. Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is Wisconsin Rapids Quadplex Presentation by a group on Zoom here. Craig, Lee, Dan.
Hi, Shane. Thank you for the opportunity. Thankfully, you won't see my ugly log in front of the camera for too much longer. I want to ensure that you can hear us, however.
Yes, we can hear you.
Fantastic. So I'm going to do a speech here, and I want you to do that. If you can hear whoever is speaking, please say something.
You keep fading in and out.
We'll try to speak.
There we go. Okay, we see your presentation on the screen.
I'm trying to get some. Yeah, but then how can you? You guys over there? Yeah. Trying to figure it out, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, there. You can see what we got going.
Yes, we can.
Very good. Thank you, Your Honor, and all the Aldermen that are in attendance tonight. Thank you for taking our presentation. I'm here with Dan Guck, and the superintendent of schools, Craig Warren. We just want to go over some of the history of where we've been and kind of what we've been up to, and currently what exciting project that's happening in Wisconsin Rapids. So give you a little bit of the background. Two years ago, we did receive a $25,000 grant from the Legacy Foundation to help us out with the design. We went to the school board. They had matched $18,500 to also help us out with the design, and an additional $12,000 to help us get more samples of the site, to help Point of Beginning, who is designing, and PRA to help out with concession design. The current site that we are looking at, if you have a page, is on the southeast corner of the Lincoln High School complex right now. Currently, what is there is an outline of the JV field, JV baseball diamond, and really a lot of empty space. The future site overview is really a master plan of what Lincoln High School would like to build out, and you can see that there is four baseball, two baseball, two softball diamonds, additional track and field, potentially a dome, and addition to tennis courts, as well as parking. These components were identified in Lincoln High School's bill note. It's to create efficiencies, social interaction, and allow for programming flexibility. Our current partners is Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools, user groups within the community. We've included contractors, Point of Beginning, followed up with the contractors and the different businesses around the community, and definitely, just like you guys are experiencing today through COVID with the virtual presentations that we've had to do, pursuing donations out in the community, and then obviously collaborating with.
Lee, if I can ask you, and I'm an Alderman, I just want to ask you, has a school totally survived to this?
Tom, could you repeat that? You kind of blurted out.
Has a school, has a school totally survived to this?
Yeah.
And what do they have, what do they have for money to back it up with?
This is Craig speaking, Tom, and yeah, our, the school board, in addition to our administrative team, are for the most part up to date where we are currently. They were made aware of some of the most recent things that have transpired. They are also aware of the fact that we had board-approved dollars that were spent to get us to the point where we are now, as we highlighted to start the presentation. The idea around whether or not we have dollars to put up towards the construction of the quadplex itself, the answer to that is no. The whole approach and protocol that you'll hear as we move through the remainder of the presentation has to do with a very generous donation and grant from the Legacy Foundation, in-kind contributions from contractors and local vendors, and then possible additional donations from a number of sources, including opportunities at paving rights. So with respect to the actual construction of the facility, the district will not have any directly contributed taxpayer dollars. However, we have, as I indicated, put some money forward for, to get the project to the point where it is now. And I think it's quite clear that since it's on our property, there would be an ongoing commitment the district would hold with respect to, you know, as time progresses and aspects of maintenance and update of that. However, we feel the work with our user groups should offset some of those costs long term.
Thank you, Craig. I appreciate your comments. Yes, I do. I really question where this group is, because I really want to see who is the head of this group. Who is the head of this group that's doing this? Or anything, anything, no, Craig, it's not for you. No. Who is the head of this group that is doing this? It's not you. Who's the head of this group?
Hey, Tom, this is.
Lee Graff, are you in charge? Or Dan, are you in charge? Who's in charge?
This is a multi-user group effort, Tom.
So who's in charge?
So it's a collective effort that approaches.
Who's in, whose name is on the front, whose name is on the top of the line?
Wisconsin Rapids School District is the financial agent to potentially receive a grant donation from the Legacy Foundation, since they're the property owner.
Oh. So the school district is, that's who's in charge, right?
Correct.
The school district is in charge. No, Craig, Craig, you, you know, this is totally, this is totally something that's brand new. This is totally brand new.
That is correct.
This even been on the agenda since I was brand new. Because what you're actually asking for is plumbing and pipe fitting, and that's going on Grove Avenue. That's what you're for. Get real and get honest with it.
Tom, let's get through.
That's what this, that's what this, that's what this is called. Get real and get real.
Tom, let's get through this presentation and ask questions afterwards.
So this is really a collaborative effort between American Legion, Vol. 9, Assumption High School, the community of Wisconsin Rapids, the Minnesota.
They ain't got no money.
The Assumption.
Assumption High School has no money, money to put into it.
Tom, let's let him finish his presentation.
The Village of Fort Edwards, the Sports Commission, and then Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools.
These are all, those are all of the entities that have been involved with this since the beginning.
Problem is. So this is the projected construction of the quadplex, the two baseball, two softball diamonds, that would can, would start on April 1st of 2021. It is an estimated $7.5 million project, and this is currently, or this, this site is actually the southeast corner of Lincoln High School. So really, the mission here is to become a community quadplex, a community diamonds, it's not just Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools facility. We've been involving the youth, multiple high schools, legion, college, and men's and women's softball, as far as treated, and as long as the idea of this is to create an effort in economic development to the community that is sustainable. Some of the features would be synthetic turf infield.
There's four features that will have the biggest uptake to them that could be changed depending on how fundraising and grant donations are received. First one would be is the infield potentially being turfed. The second one is is a raised theater style seating and a press box design. And then the fourth item would be the concession stand. And so there's different variations of this. This is just a rendering at this time as a placeholder. That's part of the original construction estimate that you'd seen stated previously.
And this is just another angle of what this, how this build out of this project actually looks like behind the football field or the Southwood County 2000 building.
Point of Beginning put this rendering together. It's showing as if Highway 54 would be on the right-hand side of the screen. It's just a rendering, and then that's leading into the site specifically about the request for tonight that we wanted to present to the council.
So really, what we're looking for is the sanitary sewer and water install along Grove Avenue to the concession building of the quadplex, based on the recommendations from the city engineer. Some of the details around Grove Avenue, it's not a paved surface. From our understanding is that this project is already, Grove Avenue is already engineered for sanitary sewer and water. And so what we mean by the recommendation of the city is that what got brought up to us, that 21st Place has a dead-end loop on 21st Place, and that we would be able to potentially tie in to the east of this, or tie in to 16th Street, which would be to the west on Grove Avenue. So this kind of gives you a visual of the city's property as opposed to Grand Rapids, the Grove Avenue, and where we could either run from east to west from 21st Place to Down Grove to the concession building, or 16th Street running east, Down Grove to concession building.
There's two lengths of measurements there, and through the city's engineering piece, they would be able to determine what would be the most appropriate. Improvements of Grove, which are already engineered for, could be improved, and the, with the fact that the, that that street and that section of road is no improvements or blacktop, there'd be minimal expense at this time by just regrading and filling it in once it's all done, and then the opportunity for future annexation is already in place because the improvements are already done for that section of the street.
Just to reiterate on the next slide, on October 31st, we were out there tearing off the old JV diamond that is currently behind, that sits east of the Southwood County 2000 football field. Just a couple pictures that sighted out completely cleared of fencing and concrete. And you guys have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Kelly, can you unmute? Anybody have anything? Go ahead, Mr. Bemke.
I guess nothing specifically for this group, but, Mr. Terry, I'm wondering if you could maybe give a little insight. I know there's been some research and background done by the city.
Sure, so.
I'm sorry, we couldn't hear you.
Jay Bemke was asking Joe Terry about some background information.
So, so the city engineering department has taken a quick look at it, as well as the street department. And for 2021, April 2021 groundbreaking, there are some challenges, not so much from the construction end, but from the design end. The engineering department, I've got a kind of a list here that I can share. I don't think it pays to go through it right now, but there's some permitting. There's some issues with the simple fact that the right-of-way is not in the city. So we'd have to work with the town to get permission to run those utilities through the town. And the engineering department right now is working on plans for our 2021 projects. Rough estimate is that it would take between 120 and 160 hours of staff time to get the plans updated, permitting sorted, things like that. If it were going to be a project that were a little later in the year, from the design end, it would be preferable from the construction end. We do have some staff turnover expected, and this would be an ideal project to fit in the queue for either late fall, early spring, because there really aren't a whole lot of neighbors or, or anything else to get some of the new staff up to speed on those, those construction activities. So we have a little bit of a conundrum there. If it, if it is, if the council does move this forward as a project, we'll have to sit down and figure out what, what the intents are, you know, what other projects are going to shuffle out of the way to make this happen, and then, you know, what might be reasonable if, if the goal is to get this thing built in 2021. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else. There, there were some, I guess, the suggestion that some of the plans were done, that there are some plans drawn up for running sewer and water down Grove. Those plans would have to be reviewed and then obviously submittals to the, to the DNR. There'd also have to be some decisions, probably first through committee, but, you know, to the extent that those services would be extended, and then obviously who's, who's, who's paying for it. You know, if the city's going to pay for it, you know, what, we'll have to put together some budgets and things like that. So a little bit of work, more, there's more administrative work to do than there is actual construction work, which, you know, is frequently the case. It takes us longer to design projects and go through the permitting process and all of the legislative and administrative parts of putting a project together than it generally takes to actually build it. But that's, I think that's about all I have at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Coath?
Thank you, Your Honor. Joe, I just, maybe you might be able to help. You, you kind of alluded to finding the money for this project. I know it's in the future. Did, was there a funding source you were looking at for it, or have an idea of how we'd fund it?
Not at this time. I mean, this is a unique project. If it was a, if it was a development, the developer would be paying for it. You know, typically, if it's a sanitary project, you especially assess the adjacent property owners. Again, this is a unique situation because none of the property owners adjacent to the project are, are in the city, and, and it's my understanding. And, um, and it's my understanding, actually just after, uh, checking with the League of Wisconsin municipalities, the city can't do, uh, an assessment to town property. It, it, it has to be city property. So there'd be some challenges as far as either deferred assessments or, or other special assessments. Again, those are things that we'd have to sit down and discuss with our, um, city attorney and, and, uh, and review. But right now, um, you know, th- there's no project allocated in the budget process yet. And so, you know, we, we would have to figure out how the project would get paid for.
Um, thank you. And then, uh, looking at this, I, I got our city map up and the sanitation sewer would have to, I believe they said debt, go to the dead end on Grove Avenue where you said we'd have to work with the township of Grand Rapids?
So, so there's a number of different possibilities there. The, the sketch that was provided to me, um, through our staff from, from these guys suggested they may be looking at doing a directional bore off the corner of 16th and Grove. That, that would be directly into the city system. Um, long-term maintenance wise, that may or may not be the, 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 the best solution. Um, you know, personally, again, without really have studied the project to a great extent, my knee-jerk reaction is that sanitary sewer down Grove and then a service, uh, essentially perpendicular to that sanitary sewer main would be, um, you know, the most beneficial and, and standard. So if there's development in the future, if something needs to be redone, you're not tearing up parking lots or, 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 or other things to fix things, so.
So then for that to go forward, that would really be contingent on the Grand Rapids Town Board to say that we'd have their blessing to tear up a little bit of Grove Avenue to take that to the end?
Right, right. We'd, we'd be looking at if there was no interest in, uh, annexation, then the need would be to, to, uh, establish a utility easement, uh, to construct in that right-of-way, and then obviously pay for it.
Okay. And I, just to kind of, I know we've talked about, um, with the airport thing about running, uh, um, utilities, um, outside the municipal boundary, and there was that whole situation is, uh, how is, how would, uh, running the utilities under Grove Avenue into was, uh, Grand Rapids be different than what, um, a member of the Grand Rapids Town Board was asking for, for the, the airport? I know they were asking for a full service hookup at the airport, but in this case, um, we're just asking them to go underneath their infrastructure to connect out to the quad, quadplexing. Is, are we violating our own ordinance by running this out?
No, not, not in this situation. Um, the, the, the presence of the utility is, uh, is, is really a permitted right in the right-of-way. So a utility, um, you know, can get an easement to, to do that, and we have other locations. In fact, just recently with the river crossing, the Forest Main River Crossing from the new West Side Lift Station, uh, there's a portion of that new Forest Main, um, that's on the south side of Blue Heron Lane there that is in the town of Grand Rapids. And we went through that easement procedure at that time. It is, it is a, a process. The town does, does, uh, you know, it's an administrative process that we have to ask the town and the town would need to approve it. Um, but this, but there wouldn't be any service provided to, you know, I'm presuming from looking at this, uh, diagram that the, the concession stand, um, you know, and all that would be in, in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Um, and depending how it's billed, if it's billed to the school district, that's also in the city. But, uh, the, you know, the physical location of service is in the city. And so to have the, um, you know, have the main in an adjoining municipality that's serving the city would still be consistent with our, uh, our code. I, I believe that's the case.
Okay, and then.
This is American, I thought.
We'll, he'll get you in the queue after Jay.
Okay.
And then, um, this is.
Yep.
We're, we're not looking for action from council on this tonight. This is just a, a presentation where this is being brought up for what somebody would like to do in the future?
Yeah, so, um, there, there's been some discussion with some of the street department staff, some of the engineering staff about this project. And, and I sat down with the mayor, um, I, I've had a few older persons ask some questions, and the recommendation was, well, there's, there's a lot of different committees this could go in front of to actually proceed or not proceed. But the first question is, is the city council accepted as a project? And, uh, and, and that's why this is in front of the, the council tonight. And speaking with the mayor, um, I, I agree with, uh, with the decision to, to have this presentation in front of the council. If the council decides that it's a project, um, you know, then there's other things that we need to do administratively, some, some budget amendments, um, funding. If maybe there isn't a need for a budget amendment, maybe there's some funding for the, the installation and the, and, and those costs will be covered. But those types of things would be reviewed then and likely discussed initially with the finance committee and potentially at the same time public works for some of the, you know, if there's any other administrative or, or procedural things that, that need to happen.
Thank you for answering the questions, Joe. Just in my opinion with this, um, kind of coming before the council tonight and with some of the questions that need to be addressed, um, before I would feel comfortable addressing it as a project, I think it would be better for the council maybe to have a committee of the whole meeting where we can have a more at-length discussion on this and get some of the other questions answered before. At this point in time, we go out and commit to anything with the questions that we don't know the answers to right now, especially with the current state of the mill and some other things we got going on in town. So, but thank you for answering your questions. My, my questions.
Uh, Jay?
So, i- if I understand this, what they're requesting is sewer and water run down Grove Avenue extended from 21st Place looks like the most logical place to start. Um, we do sewer and water work all the time, correct? Um, and I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, so I'm not going to mention a name, but I did get a rough estimate of $75,000 for this project. Um, and in all, that, there's more than likely going to have to be some de-watering done out there that was not included in that cost. I, I don't think, the wells were not included in that cost. So, and again, it was just a rough estimate. Um, I think there is some, I don't want to say this is time-sensitive and I'm not trying to push or rush, but, um, rather than perhaps a council of the whole, maybe move this into a committee and, and see if, one, we have the funding and I guess the desire to do the project, but, um, I guess I personally think this is a good project. The best thing about this project is we are, we, we get the infrastructure in for them. They put the project. It has the potential of bringing some, some things into the community that I think are good. Um, get the infrastructure in for them, and we turn it, turn this over to them and we walk away from the project. So, um, I, I would, I would suggest or I would recommend potentially that we get this in a committee if that's our outward that we're going and get this discussion started. Thank you.
Tom, you're up.
Well, thank you. So all I'm going to tell you is right now settle back in your chairs and in your shorts, Because we're going to talk about something that's real. It's taxpayers' money. There's a lot more than 50 or 60,000 dollars. This group is, and nobody wants to say who this group is, wants an in-kind donation. Now, we're going to put out 450 or half million dollars in the city. In-kind donation. And that's why this thing on the agenda tonight is totally, totally, totally shocked the hell out of me because I didn't know until this afternoon. This project has to go to public works and has to go to public works. Not if we want to do something. We have to go and we have to decide how much it's going to cost. This project is looking for an in-kind donation and I'm not kidding you. A quarter million to half million dollars in the city. Get real, people, get real. Do I believe in the project? Yes. But I believe you got to go before everybody asked, hold your one, get your money. Get real, you baseball people. Get real. It ain't a freebie because that's what you're writing, not a freebie. People have to pay. Somewhere along the line, somebody pays. That's why documents have to be drafted. Contracts have to be made. And who is paying and paying for it forever. So all I'm saying is that, um, hopefully can use the words, and I'm just going to say get off your. There's something we really have to do if we want to do it. And that's get real, people. There's a bottom line dollar to. Until I see Grand Rapids walk in that they'll put in anything, there'll be no way I'll hear getting my vote on anything. Rapids has footed the bill and everything that's going on. And it's time we call in our bounty. So it's get real, people. They owe us a hell of a lot more than we owe them, let me tell you. Because we subsidized them for decades and decades. Finally sometime, there's going to be an all the person that's going to stand in there And you know what? Frankly, the whole thing goes. Frankly, I don't give a somebody else's thing. Because there's a right and a wrong. There's a right and a wrong. So you got grand ideas of what you want to do? It is not going through the proper channels. I put it on the agenda. Oh, I've had talks with Joe Terry, Joe Ixton, yes. Trying to figure out how we address the situation. So he puts it on the agenda tonight. I don't like how he did it, so. But it went through committees. If you want to have grand presentation, you could have that at this library. But to take this to the city, what they're going to do, no, it goes through committee Get real, people. Get real. I can see some US corpsmen. All right. Get real, people. Settle in your chairs. The city doesn't right now have a half million dollars to walk through. And that's what it is. If somebody wants to walk up with another half million dollars from the, whatever, on Grove Avenue, they can. We've been waiting for 25 years to get the highway to go behind it. We can't get the money for it. Mostly ain't old enough even though that's Highway 54 bypass. So without mayor, because it, this is a futile thing to even talk about, so I'm going to end that. And actually, I'm going to end, uh, probably I'm going to end with, um, no, I might stay on for another vote yet, but otherwise, uh, it's, to me, this is ridiculous that Steve been here tonight. Totally ridiculous. So with that, Your Honor, I'm, uh, you can have the floor back, so.
Thank you.
This is Jake. I have, I have a quick comment if there's someone else in the speaking order.
And we'll put you up next, Jake. We've got Dean right now. Go ahead, Dean.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, yeah, I just want to say this. I, I agree with, um, Mr. Bemke. Um, I think that the, um, without knowing any dollar amounts at this point, I think we should meet as a council to, um, generate, see if there is some interest within the council to generate it. I don't think that's out of order in a stretch by any reason. Um, I don't think that, um, coming up with numbers, half million this or half million that, as Mr. Roy Holmes said, we have no idea that that's the number. We don't know what they're exactly looking for at this point. But it would be interesting to see exactly what the council thinks, particularly in what the benefit to the community of this project is, which is a significant thing to consider as we're talking about paying tax dollars. There is, I see this project as very beneficial to the community and, um, could bring in a lot of revenue to the community. So I think we should definitely look at this to see if there's interest. Thank you.
Uh, Jake, you're next.
Thank you. Uh, firstly, I'd like to thank the group for their presentation tonight. I thought it was very informative. Would say I also need more information on this, especially on the financial end of what the total cost from the city would be. And from there I would go to, we have a lot of baseball fields and parks around the city, um, Robinson, the Sandlot, Mead, that could also use some renovation. So there's dollars that need to go there too. So once we see the finances and, and we can take a total look at things, I would feel more comfortable deciding whether this is a project we go with or not. At this time, just need more information. Thanks.
Thank you, Jake. Um, council, what are your wishes to, I guess, do you wish it to send it to public works next or to a committee of the whole for, because I think the numbers that you're seeking probably would come through public works so you can figure out the cost estimate?
I'll make a motion to move this to public works.
Jake?
I'll, I'll second their motion.
We have a second by Jay. And we have Mr. Coath.
I'm just going to cancel because I, because you have public works on one hand and then you're going to have property and finance on the other hand. I've thought maybe committee of the whole to have a at-like discussion about it would be better, but, um, it's got to start somewhere, so Jake beat me to a motion.
Thank you. Um, Jay?
I guess the, the last thing I'd, I'm just wondering if the group that was doing the presentation is still on and if they'd like to add anything right now?
Dan Lee, Craig, anything you'd like to add?
At the end of the day, we just want to know, or just want to make sure that the council's aware of all of it, uh, what the project entails. Um, obviously hoping for the city's partnership for this, for the, uh, small piece to see such, uh, uh, a large addition get put in to the community for its youth and create the excitement here that we greatly need. And, uh, you know, the great part is, is after the city is able to do their part and step away, uh, they have no ownership, budgeting or maintenance expectations of it going forward. It's the district's responsibility to all maintain and, uh, continue to partner with all of the different user groups that support it from youth through adults in the baseball and the softball community.
Thank you guys very much for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dan Lee and Craig. Um, we have a motion.
Thank you.
And a second on the floor to send this to public works committee. Any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, um, council people that are present, please cast your ballot, ballots. Um, Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. Tom? Tom, how, how would you like to vote on the motion? And lastly, Tom, would you like to vote on the motion? Jake, how do you vote?
Aye.
I guess probably abstention.
Okay.
Tom, you're
Mayor, I think, I think you missed, I think you missed me. I was muted, I think, so.
Oh, sorry, called three times. So how would you like to vote on the motion to send it to Public Works?
Uh, I, I voted no.
No? Okay. Really? What happened? Oh.
Or I can just manually, I can just manually do whatever. Um, okay.
So you want to, you need a re-vote?
Yep. I need a re-vote because I'm Mark Thomas, standing.
Oh. Okay, so, you ready?
I am ready. Okay.
Want to get it to, uh, vote? There we go. So people present, please cast your ballots. You got everybody?
And if you can hear me, Jennifer, if you can hear me, Jennifer, I vote no.
Yep, we got you down as a no. Thanks, Tom.
Okay, there we go.
Motion carried seven As, one Ne. Thank you, everybody. Uh, next item is the reading of the minutes from the previous meetings held on October 20th and November 12th. What are your wishes?
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes placed on file.
Thank you, Steve. We have a motion by Steve, seconded by Scott Kellogg. Any further discussions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots who are present. Uh, Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Tom? Tom, how do you vote on the motion to, uh, accept the minutes? And lastly, Tom, how are you, how would you like to vote on the motion to accept the minutes? Yep. Oh, here we go.
I vote aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Tom. Uh, Jake, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. And that motion carried eight As and zero Ne's. Our next, uh, item is consider a resolution extending the emergency declaration proclamation regarding the COVID-19 pandemic.
I make a motion to approve and recertify the declaration.
We have a motion by Joe Zerflu. If I'm, I think, yeah. And seconded by Thad Kubaschak. Any further discussion? Um, go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, last month with the, uh, emergency declaration, I did ask that council and haven't seen or heard anything, but obviously, uh, chain of command for government for the city, you as the mayor are responsible for the day-to-day operations. Um, should you, uh, get COVID and unable to perform, then that those duties befall to the president of the council. Um, but if you guys should both be ill, I'd ask for uh, something to see where how the city would be governed after that. And I was just asking if there's any follow-up on that yet of how, how that would work if we, uh, started having people that were out due to the virus.
I have to apologize. I have forgotten, so I will get with the city attorney and, uh, see who three, four, five, and oh, go ahead, Mr. Kubaschak.
Thank you. I think I can answer your question, Steve. Um, it, the, uh, council president is chosen by the council itself, so what will happen is if Shane is and then I am incapacitated in any type of way, regardless if it's COVID, um, then there will be a special meeting called, someone will have to call that a council member can call that, and then it would be the rest of the body who would choose that, just like the body chose who the council president is through a, um, uh, a secret ballot. The same thing would happen to nominate who's gonna continue their forth.
Thanks, Thad.
That makes sense. Anything further?
I don't, I have nothing.
Okay. I guess just let council know, um, I had, I guess technically used that to drop city hall to limited access. Uh, and, uh, so I've done that in the last last week. Um, still trying to provide same service, but just no counter traffic. Any questions? Anything further? Seeing none? Uh, please cast your ballots. Uh, those present, please cast your ballots. Uh, Joe Zerflu?
Aye.
Tom Rayo?
Aye.
And Jake Catna?
Aye.
That motion carried eight As and zero Ne's. Our next item up is consider a resolution setting the equivalent unit charge for the stormwater utility, or stormwaters, stormwater management utility. And we do have attachment on that?
Make a motion to accept the, uh, stormwater rate increase as presented.
So we have a motion by Mr. Coath, seconded by Mr. Veneman. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Uh, those present? Joseph Zerflu?
Aye.
Uh, Tom Rayo?
Aye.
And Jake Catna?
Aye.
Thank you. And that motion carried eight As and zero Ne's. Our next, uh, item up is consider a resolution adopting the 2021 City of Wisconsin Rapids budget. And what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, resolution for the 2021 city budget.
We have a motion by Mr. Coath, seconded by Mr. Kellogg. Is there any further discussion? Seeing or hearing none? Please cast your ballots. Um, Mr. Zerflu?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Rayo?
Aye.
And Mr. Catna?
Aye.
Thank you. And that motion carried eight As and zero Ne's. Uh, the next item on, on the agenda is consider the adoption the action of the planning commission meetings held on November 2nd and November 16th. And if you bear with me, I'll get that up. Sorry, I am not ready. What's that? Yeah, I forgot it, Heidi. Okay. The planning commission met at 4:00 PM on November 2nd, 2020, in the first floor conference room at city hall and via phone and video conferencing. A list of persons in attendance are on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 4:07 PM. Uh, the first item was approval of the report from October 5th, Planning Commission meeting. Motion by Fith, seconded by Bray to approve the report from October 5th, 2020, Plan Commission meeting. That motion carried five As, zero Ne's. Item two was Happy Hippo Construction LLC, CSM, request for a certified survey map approval for the reconfiguration of, or reconfiguration of three parcels and the dedication of public right-of-way or dedication of property as public right-of-way. The subject properties are located at 2751, 2811, and 2821, 8th Street South, parcel IDs 34-12636, also 34-13000, and 34-13000-1, and 34-130001. Staff found no issues with zoning and recommended approval. Discussion ensued regarding the parameters and ramifications for Lot 1, the flowage of the stream, and conceivable plans for the future development. Motion by Fith, seconded by Burkhardt, to approve the proposed CSM and accept the right-of-way. That motion carried five zero. Item 3, 48th and Goal LLC, extraterritorial CSM, request for certified survey map approval for the creation of four lots, one of which is under five acres within the town of Saratoga. The subject property is east of 48th Street and south of Townline Road, parcel ID 18-00027. Staff had no concerns regarding the CSM and recommended approval. Motion by Benke, seconded by Fith, to approve the extraterritorial CSM. Motion carried five As, zero Ne's. Item four is staff update. Staff provided an update regarding a tabled item from October meeting. Questions and concerns can be directed to Kyle Kearns prior to the December Planning Commission meeting. Item five was adjournment. Motion by Benke, seconded by Burkhardt, to adjourn. That motion carried five As, zero Ne's. Meeting adjourned at 4:28 PM. Do you want me to read the second one right away, or do you want to take each up as individual?
You could read the second one right away.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the second Planning Commission report was from November 16th. That Planning Commission meeting met at 4:00 PM on November 16th by a remote conferencing. List of attendees are on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. Now, the first item was approve the reports from November 2nd, 2020, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. That motion by Benke, seconded by Fith, to approve the report from November 2nd, 2020 Plan Commission meeting. That motion carried six As, zero Ne's. Item two is Plan 20-0958, Campbell Construction JD, Inc., request for a site plan review to construct in addition onto Culver's Restaurant at 2711, 8th Street South, parcel ID 3412632. Staff recommended approval with the conditions outlined on page one of the staff report. Motion to approve Plan 20-0958, seconded by Burkhardt. That motion carried six As, zero Ne's. Item three was adjournment. Motion by Benke, seconded by Blazer, to adjourn. That motion carried also six As, zero Ne's. That meeting adjourned at 4:11 PM. And what are your wishes?
Make a motion to approve both reports.
We have a motion by Coath to, and a second by Kellogg to approve both reports. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Those present, please cast your ballots. Uh, Mr. Joseph Zerflu?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Tom Rayo?
Aye.
And Jake Catna?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. And that motion carried eight As, zero Ne's. Next item on the agenda is consideration for adoption, the actions of the standing committee committees for the common council. Uh, Mr. Coath, you have a bunch of Finance Committee meetings.
Yes, I also, um, gonna have to find some of them here in the packets, because, uh, I'm having some problems.
Here, hold on.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, um, I guess I'll take these because of everything with property and finance. I'll I guess all I'll do is do the, uh, um, reports, the informational reports for the budget as one, and then when we get into the regular one that was held on the 5th, I'll do that one separately. That makes sense for everyone? The Property and Finance Committee meeting, um, was called to order on Tuesday, October 20th, 2020, at 5:00 PM. All members of the Property and Finance Committee were present, except for Alder Person Kubaschak. Also in attendance were Alder Person Bimke, Mayor Blazer, Matt Heidman, Paul Vaullett, Joe Terry, and Jake Klingforth. Uh, meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. It was a 20, uh, item number two was 2021 Budget Review on Emphasis with Street Department and Park Recreation. Public Superintendent Paul Vaullett and Park Recreation Supervisor Matt Heidman reviewed their respective budgets with the committee. No action was taken. Item number three was adjournment. It was moved by Kellogg, seconded by Coath to adjourn, and meeting was adjourned. The, uh, next Property and Finance Committee meeting was October 22nd, 2020. All members of the Property and Finance Committee were present. Also in attendance were Alder Person uh, Veneman, Mayor Blazer, Tim DeSorci, Chief Levins, and Chief Young. Uh, Alder Person Coath called the order, meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Item number two was 2021 Budget Review with emphasis on public safety. Chief Levins and Chief Young reviewed their respective budgets with the committee. No action was taken. Item three was adjournment. It was moved by Coath, seconded by Kubaschak to adjourn. Meeting adjourned at 5:42 PM. Uh, report of the meeting for October 27th, 2020. All members of the Property and Finance Committee were present, except for myself. Alder Person Veneman sat in for myself. Also in attendance were Alder Person Rayo, Mayor Blazer, Tim DeSorci, Ryan Gieffer, and Joe Terry. Alder Person Kellogg called the meeting to order at 5:05 PM. Item number two was the 2021 Budget Review with emphasis on wastewater. Wastewater Superintendent Ryan Gieffer reviews the wastewater budget with the committee. No action was taken. It was moved by Kellogg, seconded by Kubaschak to adjourn. Meeting adjourned at 5:48 PM. Report of the Property and Finance Committee of October 29th, 2020. All members of the Property and Finance Committee were present, except for myself. Alder Person Veneman sat in for me. Also in attendance were Alder Person Bimke, Mayor Blazer, Tim DeSorci, Andy Burnett, Jim Brown, and Jeff Kuhn. Alder Person Kellogg called the meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Item number two was the 2021 Budget Review with emphasis on McMillan Library and other budgets. McMillan Library Director Andy Barnett reviewed the McMillan Library budget with the committee. No action was taken. Item number three was review and consider for approval, the 2021 Waterworks and Lighting Commission budget. Uh, Director of Finance for Waterworks and Lighting Commission reviewed the budgets, the utilities budget with the committee. It was moved by Kellogg, seconded by Kubaschak to approve the 2021 Waterworks and Lighting Commission budget. See attachment number one. Motion carried. Item number four was adjournment. It was moved by Kellogg, seconded by Kubaschak to adjourn. The meeting adjourned at 5:32 PM. Say again? Uh, no, we, I think we have the public hearing in here yet. Or and I'm just looking for that.
The 20th, the 22nd, the 27th, the 29th, the 10th, and then you go back to November 5th. So November 10th, that's the last one.
All right. Report of the Property and Finance Committee meeting from November 10th, 2020. All members of the Property and Finance Committee were present. Also in attendance was Alder Person Veneman, Alder Person Bimke, Alder Person Rayo. Also in attendance was Alder Person Veneman, Alder Person Bemke, Alder Person Rehm, Tim DeSorci, Chief Young, Sue Schill, and Joe Terry. Meeting was called to order at 4:36 PM. Item number two was 2021 Budget Review after discussion and options on the 2021 budget. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Kellogg to improve and increase in the storm water utility fee of 581. Motion carried. Item number three was adjournment. It was moved by Kellogg, seconded by Coth to adjourn. The meeting adjourned at 5:21 PM. And was there a one for the public hearing in here or no?
That's a council meeting.
That's a, okay.
That was the one that was approved at the beginning.
Okay, got it. All right. With that, I will make a motion to approve the reports of those Property and Finance Committee meetings.
Thank you. We have a motion by Coth, seconded by Veneman. Is there any discussion on those committee meetings?
No action was.
Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead.
For E4.
E4.
I believe that passed on November 5, or did we skip that one?
We skipped it and we'll, we'll take, we'll read that one next after these.
Very good, there were a lot of them.
Yep, yeah, so, yeah, we'll dispose of these and then go on. Any further discussions? Seeing none. Please cast your ballots. Mr. Zerflu.
Aye.
Mr. Rehm.
Aye.
And Mr. Katnaugh.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Mr. Coth, November 5 Finance meeting.
Thank you, Your Honor. Report of the Property and Finance Committee meeting held November 5, 2020. All members of the Property and Finance Committee were present, except for myself and Alder Person Kubashak. Alder Person Veneman sat in for myself. Alder Person Bemke sat in for Alder Person Kubashak. Also in attendance was Alder Person Rehm, Mayor Blazer, Tim DeSorci, and Kyle Kearns. Alder Person Kellogg called the meeting to order at 4:43 PM. Item number two was consider a special event and/or street closure from the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce for a Rekindle the Spirit event on Wednesday, November 25, 2020. No action was taken, has approval by the Finance Committee, was not needed according to city policy. Item number three was consider for approval the publication of the U.S. Economic Development Administration Cares Act Grant. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Bemke, to approve the application for the U.S. Economic Development Administration Cares Act. Motion carried. Item number four was review and consider for approval an ordinance which would authorize Waterworks and Lighting Commission to place delinquent electric billings as special charges on the property tax rule. See attached ordinance. It was moved by Kellogg, seconded by Bemke, to approve the ordinance which would authorize the Waterworks and Lighting Commission to place delinquent electric billings as special charges on the property tax bill. Motion carried with Alder Person Veneman voting negative. See Attachment 1. Item number five was audit of the bills. Motion by Veneman, seconded by Bemke, to approve check number 582726173. Motion carried. Item number six was discuss option for the 2021 tax collections and preliminary discussions of converting to two tax collection installments in future years. It was moved by Kellogg, seconded by Bemke, to approve that in-person tax collection would not be allowed due to COVID-19 concerns for the first installment due in January 31, 2021. Motion carried. Item number seven was review the 2021 budget. No action was taken. Item number eight was set the next meeting date. The next regularly scheduled Property and Finance Committee meeting will be Tuesday, December 1, 2020, at 4:30 PM. Item number nine was adjournment. It was motion by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to adjourn. Motion carried, meeting adjourned at 5:48 PM. With that, before going forward, I will hold out item number four. Is there anyone else that wants to hold anything out? Hearing nothing, I would move for adoption of the report withholding item number four.
We have a motion by Coth. It's seconded by Veneman to approve the balance of the report, holding out item number four.
Can you just, Mayor, can you just repeat what item four is?
Yes, it is. Review and consider the approval of an ordinance which would authorize Water and Light Commission to place delinquent electric bills, billings as special charges on property tax rule.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any discussion on the balance of the report? Seeing none. Please cast your ballots that are present. Mr. Zerflu.
Aye.
Mr. Rehm.
Aye.
And Mr. Katnaugh.
Aye.
Thank you. And that motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Item number four, Mr. Coth.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last month, as well know, I made a motion to send this back to committee and hope that we could have got a little more discussion on it. It's really unique. Every time something like this comes to council, this is one of those learning experiences with council where you, you learn a little bit more. When this item initially come up on the 6th of October for presentation, we didn't have a whole lot of input from the public that was here. And at face value, it just looked like a good way to recoup the money that Waterworks and Lighting is owed. And I do absolutely agree that our municipal service provides the utility, and they're certainly owed for the service that they provide. One thing that wasn't considered was the impact that it would have on businesses, more particularly landlords. And I'm sure a lot of us know that that group has been very vocal with this proposed ordinance. I know we've heard both sides of it. I've, this referencing to learning experience, we've been given a lot of information for Waterworks and Lighting, also been given a lot of information from the landlords, as well as received phone calls from citizens that are both for and against this. On the side of the municipal utility, I certainly understand that in some aspects, they're limited in what they can do for their collection methods. And in other methods, there is probably perhaps avenues that they have not explored. I was contacted by a member of the State Assembly today who said that they had passed a bill sometime back that gave the utilities various options to collect these past due bills that he suggested that the utilities, the publicly owned utilities have not been pursuing. I would like to really see that before we're passing a bill on to somebody else, that every possible avenue of collection has been explored before we stick anybody else with a bill. I, the landlords own businesses in this town, and they pay taxes in this town. Some of them pay significant tax bills. On one hand, I don't want to slight a business owner and tell them that they need to pay somebody else's bill, and it's their fault that they got a bad tenant. I use the analogy of somebody applying for a job when they show up to an employer. Somebody sits down at a job interview. They're never going to sit in the interview and say, "Well, I call in sick a lot. I like to show up late. I add 15 minutes on to my break, take more than I can, and generally like to steal stuff from the company for my own personal use." No one would ever show up to a job interview and say that. Likewise, when a tenant applies for a property from a landlord, it's mom, dad, and apple pie. "We lived in the community our whole lives. We both got jobs here. We'll be good tenants. We'll pay our bills on time. We've never done anything wrong." So, just like in the job situation, employer takes on the employee that went through the job interview, and the employee's the 90-day wonder. And then after 90 days, the employee, their true colors show through. And then, in most cases, the employer's stuck with them. Kind of same thing for landlords. These people show up, like I said. They say what they say to get the house. Then when they're in there, landlords are stuck with them. And landlords have to go through an eviction process. Not only is the utility losing money, but the landlord's losing money. If these people aren't paying their power bill, they're not paying their rent. And they're trashing the house in most cases. And landlords do have to increase their rent to cover their losses for the damages that are done to the house. Sure, every one of us here know that there's remedies in municipal court that you can use to recover cost. You can sue somebody and get a judgment against them for like seven to 10 years. But the fact of the matter is, if the person who has a judgment against them simply chooses not to pay that judgment, there is no mechanism of enforcement to ever collect that money from them. Subsequently, to my understanding, a judgment can be renewed, but money lost is money lost, and those, those costs get passed on. Yes, on one hand, maybe landlords do need to do a better job of vetting their tenants, as employers should vet their employees. But you can't catch them all. And I really, really, in my heart, do not feel that the city overall, our customers, should be responsible for people that don't pay their power bill. But nor do I feel the landlords should be responsible to cover that power bill either. I really sincerely believe there is a solution to this method, or solution to this problem. We just haven't, we just haven't looked hard enough at what all of our options are. We, we haven't looked at what I believe could be every possible angle that we could do to recoup these monies. As a member of council, and as a citizen of this community, and as a water and light consumer myself, I do have an interest in this matter. I reiterate, I don't want to pay somebody else's power bill. I don't think anyone does. So I really, really hope that as a council, we can take the time to do this right and not find the quick fix, but find the best fix. So I know that this will require two readings, and it'll come back in December. My only hope is between now and December that we can find the most palatable, best option to hold those who don't pay their bills responsible without passing on the cost to either party. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coth. I guess we have a handful of people on Zoom here that probably want to speak. And I, and I'm just wondering if council, and then after they get done speaking, then maybe council can have a discussion? And.
I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, but I have a question for Steve. You referred something to you'd contact with a state assemblyman or legislator. Could you just tell me what that was again?
Yeah, Scott Krug had reached out to me and said that there was legislation put through by the State Assembly that there's other collection options that he doesn't feel is, are being pursued as vigorously as what they could be pursued. I could try to ask him and see if he could give me a bill number or what the.
Excuse me, I didn't want to interrupt, but the bill was in 2014. I don't have the bill number, but it was in 2014. And it basically said that, that it, it was, gave municipal, municipal utilities to use, the ability to use tax collection and set, set collection measures for their tenants for all municipalities. It was passed in 14. Again, I don't have the bill number. That could certainly be looked up.
But I believe in his communication to me was like, "Use tax collection to go on them individually, not put it on."
Individuals' tax, not to the.
Yeah, like, like run a tax, run a tax intercept.
Yeah.
So I guess if, I, I just wanted to kind of see what council thinks since we have some people on Zoom. If you would be okay with me identifying that person and allowing them their, their time, some time to speak versus trying to get somebody to recognize them. And because they probably each want to participate and speak, and that can just go right down the line. And then, so we'll, with the landlords present, and then we have water and light, and then, and then council, then the remaining time, then everybody will have spoken. And then council can discuss and deliberate at that point amongst yourselves? If that, if everybody's okay with that? Yeah, I think five minutes, no more than five? Well, if that's council's wish, it's three minutes? Tom?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just say something?
Yes, please.
Okay. This has been before the committee, and it's done whatever. And other than if there's fine points of interpretation, what can be done? I think it's up to the council to talk about it and determine what they want to do. Up to the council, determine what they want to do. It's been before the committee, so.
I guess.
The chance has been had by, the chance has been had by the people. They, all they want to do is they want to do.
Council, what if?
To me, it's in behalf of the, it's in hands of the council right now this evening, and that's what it is. Council should make the decision, and they should do whatever. Unless there's a technicality to ask from one of the entities, then they could respond to it. But if there's not a technicality, no, then we just hold on it, so.
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Jake, or Joe.
Just for the sake of being consistent, I understand Mr. Rehm's concern, but all past council meetings, we've recognized people. I'm prepared to recognize anyone that wants to talk and whoever else wants to do the same. That is consistent with prior meetings.
I agree. The rest of the council?
I agree.
Did you say three minutes or?
Yeah.
Three minutes?
I'd say three minutes, yeah.
Okay, so I'll go down the list, or I'll, if I miss somebody, raise your hand, but, or wave vigorously in the front of your camera. But if Kelly could unmute everybody, and then I will, I see first on my list would be Gary and Susan Waiter. And if you have something you'd like to say, this is your opportunity.
She waved.
And the floor is yours for three minutes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my husband recently purchased a property, and he inherited water and light bill with that to the tune of over $800. She's on a payment plan. She hasn't paid a penny. She pays $50 to us that we put on the water because we forced her to pay it. But as far as her electric, she's not paying a dime. We inherited this. The account follows us because it's still an active account. So we will end up with this huge bill at the end of COVID that we didn't even own the property at that time. If these people are not held accountable for their bill, this is going to keep continuing to go on. Water and Light doesn't do collections. I received a flyer from PSE from Water and Light. In it, they talk about disconnection, but they never do it. They talk about having deposits, which they never do. Water and Light needs to do their part. We as landlords do whatever we can when we get a renter in there. And Water and Light really needs to step up their game.
Thank you. Do you have anything further?
No.
Okay, thank you. Patrick Goodness, you're up.
You're muted, Patrick.
Yep, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Your Honor and councilman. I appreciate the time this evening. First of all, I'd like to, to address everyone and say, we get what's happening. We understand what's happening with the city. We recognize the concern with Waterworks and Lighting that they're behind on their collections. This is not an enviable position for any of us. Uh, this is not an enviable position for any of us. But I think it's also important to recognize that our community, uh, as well as the world, is going through a very, very difficult time. And it's really a question of how do we respond to difficulties? Do we respond by being accountable or do we respond by deflecting? And my concern right now is what I see from Water Works and Lighting is that they're deflecting. We have a concern, we recognize, hey, lots of people are not paying their utilities. But then the question becomes who is accountable? It's obviously the person who's using the service. Inasmuch as when someone uses the gas, they don't charge the landlords. When someone uses their cell phone, they don't charge the landlords. Uh, when someone uses the cable, they don't charge the landlords. But somehow with Water Works and Lighting and the public utilities with water and sewer, that gets passed back to the landlords. And now this next step, which is to try to push these utilities, the electric utilities onto landlords. The concern that I have with this is, number one, uh, it's really a question of accountability. And it's a question of who should be responsible for collection. Water Works and Lighting is in fact responsible for collection. And they're responsible for measured efforts to collect from the user. To deflect that to a landlord is really unscrupulous as far as I'm concerned. And it's a, uh, really a deflection of their fiduciary responsibilities, the collection. What I would like to see is collaboration to work with landlords. We'd be happy to help Water Works and Lighting receive the money that they're due. Inasmuch as we'd also love to be paid, uh, when we have judgments on our behalf. And as someone mentioned earlier, it's almost impossible to collect on a judgment. These are difficult times for everyone. Uh, I would ask that Water Works and Lighting takes a good, hard look at their own financial portfolio, which now numbers at 10 million plus dollars of investments. Plus, uh, as what I saw from the latest, um, notes from the, the, the Water Works and Lighting, uh, on par for $1.3 million in profits this year, income. Is this utility has profited and done well with the community for many, many years. I think now is the time that it also needs to share in some of the downturn. These are difficult times for everyone. Uh, let's work together and find a way, uh, to help Water Works and Lighting, uh, collect from these tenants. Uh, but let's not punish someone who was not a party to the action to begin with. This is about a user and the utility. And it shouldn't involve people who are not involved and have no say in the transaction. Um, my goal is to hope that, uh, the, the council, uh, will not allow Water Works and Lighting to relegate their fiduciary responsibility to collection uh, and to, to relegate that to landlords. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. Um, Kevin White, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Uh, I, I really appreciate the, the way the first meeting went, uh, on the 20th and, um, appreciate the conversation as it's gone along. And just the, the effort that everyone's taken to, uh, to hear our, our story, our side of the story. Um, I also, uh, really believe in people and I believe in, in leadership working. And I really do believe that Water and Light, uh, will be able to step up to the challenge on this and, and, and look at the opportunities they have in collections. I can tell you this week I've talked to, uh, about five tenants that were behind in either rent or in some passion in utilities. All of those conversations have happened via, uh, text. None of them have been on the phone. Not a single person will answer my phone call, but they will reply to me via text. And, uh, that's really what we're facing every day. There's a huge change in the way that, that business is conducted and it really is all on the phone. So I hope that we can, uh, I, I believe that, um, with some of this feedback, that Water and Light can look at some of those options and hopefully invest in some ways that they can reach out to people. Part of those conversations that I've had with, uh, with my tenants this week and last week, um, has been around, I believe they were focused on getting some, you know, maybe some federal benefits and help. And this is kind of the time where they're starting to be behind. And so, um, my conversations have been around what is available. And actually the city website has a great, uh, page that talks about, uh, what they can get for, for help around energy assistance. And so I point them to that page, they've all thanked me. Uh, I have only two tenants that were behind in, in electric and, and utilities, but they were, they were glad to go out and use that resource. I think that's kind of the conversation that needs to happen. And then over time, over the next six months or so, hopefully, as that conversation happens more from a landlord standpoint and also from Water and Light, that we can get these numbers down. And, um, and I, I wouldn't advise, I mean, I certainly don't want to see this come back. But, you know, we're really just passing the buck a little bit on this, even if it did pass, because nothing, this is not going to help at all until the end of next year. And then would go backward and be retroactive. So I really believe, as I said in my letter to the council, that we want to abide by the rules that we had coming in to this pandemic. And we want to believe in everyone and all the leadership. And I do, I believe in Jeff as the finance director. I believe in those people that have been talked to and that have shared information with us at Water and Light. I believe they can address this. And I believe that we as landlords will work with them and are working with them to make sure that we address this with our tenants.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. Thank you, Kevin. Dean Ramsden, your three minutes are, the floor is yours. Dean Ramsden.
Okay, thank you, mayor, and thank you, council. Um, uh, I'm gonna try, try to go as quick as I can and I don't want to repeat. Um, I really do like what Tom has said about, on the previous presentation about right and wrong. And I just feel like this is socially wrong. Um, I feel like it's theft. Um, and they can commit theft by, uh, leaving their lights on, uh, air conditioning on. They can run up water and sewer bills and it's just pure theft. And, uh, no different than Walmart or We Energies or any company, they always factor in theft. Walmart factors in theft and that, every business across this country has to factor in that theft. And I feel Water Works and Lighting is no different. They, they're a business just like we're a business and they need to factor that in. I like what Patrick said about their profits and their money. They've enjoyed lots of profits throughout the years. This, we are all faced with this pandemic, not just Water Works and Lighting. Uh, the act that they're talking about is Act 274. And I have, uh, I was actually part of this or when this came out five years ago, um, and everything was fine, so we left it alone. But Sue Waiter made a direct point on that, is that according to the PSC, Water Works and Lighting could collect the deposit. And I, there are 16 pages, so I don't want to go into every one of them. But one of the main one is Water Works and Lighting could collect the deposit, just like we collect the security deposit. And so they need to be held, in my opinion, need to be just as responsible running that water, like Water Works and Lighting business, just like we have to run our business. And I don't want to run over my time. I have one of my tenants here, Jenny Bloom at 711, 11th Avenue North, that just had an experience, um, and, uh, she's been paying her, her electric bill. And, um, she didn't realize that the Water Works and Lighting was taking all of that money and applying it for the electric bill. Sorry for not letting you speak here. And, um, because of the sake of the, of the three minutes here. And, and so just could you quickly share?
When I had called and found out what was going on, because I received a letter from Dean telling me that I had a $389 water bill.
So one second, I have in my lease that if they're over 150, it is, it is grounds for eviction because we had to put that under for Water Works. So she now, she's at $389 and Water Works and Lighting does not shut the water off. And so she didn't even realize that, that she had a $389 water bill.
Because it was taken off the total bill. But the thing is, is that they're only taking off the electric part, which is leaving my water part for my landlords to take care of. And I don't understand why that is, because I am the user, not him. And it's unfair why they're just taking off for electric and not for the water. So we're stuck with this bill now.
And then to, to, for her to pay, and I know I'm going on, on three minutes here, but to make her pay, she had to write a note.
I had to write a note, get a money order, write a note, go to the office, in their box.
And physically drop it off, because their system, if she paid over the phone, would not go to the water bill. So she had to write a note, physically drive there and because of her banking, she goes the QuickTrip or something to get money.
Money order.
To do a money order and then physically drop it off to Water Works and Lighting. So honestly, you guys don't know what's going on behind the scenes here with what they're trying to do. They, they, they need to run this, just like we run our business, because we're going to force, I'm going to end up evicting my tenant if she don't pay the bill.
Thank you, Dean.
I don't want to do that.
Thank you, Dean. You have three minutes. Um, JR Stewart.
First of all, I'd like to thank the, the mayor and also the council for the opportunity, uh, to, uh, speak this evening. I know you don't have to do that. We appreciate the opportunity to do that. And I'm asking, you know, that the council rethink the proposal, uh, for this ordinance. Uh, it really doesn't make sense to allow Water and Light to shift the responsibility to us as property owners. And responsibility rests with these tenants. And there needs to be systems, uh, put in place and, and revisions from the systems that exist in order for it to be run more effectively as a business. Thank you.
Thank you. A face I haven't seen in a long time, Greg. Greg, if you have something to say, would you like to address the council?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Uh, you're muted yourself, Greg.
Okay.
There you go.
All right. Like to thank everybody, um, saw a lot of the points. Um, I've had rentals in the area since 94. I also live in the area. Um, just at the enabling factor for the tenant, you know, there's not going to be a motivation for them to pay the electric bill, they know the landlord will. Another thing too is I do have rentals in other areas where I have a light energy. And, uh, I haven't checked yet, but I've never had issues with rates or anything like that. And the next point I have is, if it's starting to cost a lot of money in the debt, would it be worth for Water Works and Lighting to sell out to a light energy? That's all I have.
Thank you, Greg. I guess looking through the list, um, my chances at Sharon Jacoby?
It is.
Okay.
I guess, uh, Brandon has addressed the council and, um, I've sent a letter. I just think that this is really an undue burden to landlords right now. Everybody's struggling with COVID. Um, our tenants are struggling. Um, landlords are unable to evict, we're suffering from the same, um, kind of moratorium on action that, um, the public utility is. Um, and to put everyone's burden of COVID on the landlord isn't right. You know, the tenants struggle so they can't pay rent. The landlords pay. They can't pay their utilities, the landlords pay. At what point are we going to have people who are unwilling to invest in our community? When we see old rundown houses, investors are buying those, investors are fixing them up. This isn't making it a viable situation for investors in the community. We can't be responsible for all of the burden of COVID and all of the burden of poverty in our community and still continue to invest. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I believe that should be all the landlords. Um, Jim from Water and Light? Would you like to address the council, Jim or Jeff or both?
Uh, this is Jeff. I can, uh, I can address the, the council. Um, I, I don't think there's any disagreement that the utility's strongest collection tool, uh, is disconnecting service for non-payment. In 2019, we disconnected nearly 1,000 electric properties, uh, to urge payment. And, and that works well. Uh, unfortunately, in March of 2020, the Public Service Commission took away that ability from us. Uh, several times extended that moratorium out now until at least April 15th of 2021 and likely longer. Um, I guess, you know, if this ordinance was approved, um, the utility really has no intention of this being the only collection tool used. Again, like I said, we disconnected nearly 1,000. Uh, disconnections in 2019, we would continue to do those things. We would continue to utilize, uh, TRIP, SDC collection agencies like we currently do and probably even more aggressively. Uh, the, the Act 274, uh, that came up before, um, a lot of those provisions only come into play if a municipal utility tax rolls electric. And, um, I believe at last count, uh, 78 of the 82 municipal electric utilities have been granted that authority, uh, by their municipality, which is an option that the Wisconsin Legislature gave to the municipalities to do so. You know, if, if these revenues aren't collected, um, unfortunately, um, that is our, our way of collecting funds to run the utility. Those costs, uh, work into the rates, uh, get socialized amongst all the customers. And, uh, I guess, you know, that's the discussion that needs to be had.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, I guess Kelly, if you want to, if there's no one else, it's, give the council an opportunity to deliberate, discuss, debate. Um, so Kelly, if you could mute everybody and the floor is the council's. Sorry. Scott Kellogg, you still wish to speak?
Yes. Basically, just to respond to the comments made, landlords are concerned, why is it their responsibility to collect the utility bills? And I'm saying, I, I was a landlord. That's what they embarked in. They, they became a landlord and they take on that responsibility. And I am empathetic toward the challenges that they have because I had similar challenges. Um, and where they talk about the Water and Light stepping up the game and doing things, was passed out to the older persons, all the things that they're doing. For, um, with, with TRIP and collection agencies and sending out notices and a number of things. And there's a whole litany of things that they're doing. And some comment was made that it's, uh, because of the times and right now. This has been, I asked one person that worked at Water and Light, how long has this happened? He said 13 years that he's been there. And he thinks this is a case for 20 years. So for 20 years, some of the property owners are not paying their utilities. And who absorbs the cost? The other property owners and, and throughout the city. And to me, one person mentioned theft. To me, that's a theft. And for example, what I did is Water and Light sent out percentages. And we, and we talk about landlords, okay? And we group them as landlords in, in plural. But when I look at the landlord status property, 1,149 are past due on utilities. 1,049. 3,546 are up to date. So it seems to me 3,546, um, landlords are managing their property while 1,149 don't seem to be able to manage their property. I don't know why. There may be extenuating circumstances, how they select tenants, how they, I don't know, whatever it would be. But that seems to be, uh, crazy to me. And then if you look at non-landlord properties, if you look at numbers of properties, 692 are not current on their property utilities. This is non-landlords. While 9,856 are current. So 9,856 property owners are subsidizing 692. And so then when you put all the property owners together, it seems like all the property owners, 1,841 property owners are not up to date. 1,841. And 13,000 property owners are carrying the rate cost, are carrying it. And if the rate is increased, 88% of the property owners will have to carry the cost of 12% of the property owners. Why should I have people in my district that are on fixed incomes, as all of you do? Why should those property owners have to carry the burden of those property owners, if it's landlord or non-landlord, of paying their bills? And by not using the utility's responsibility for the cost, there's no need to be conservative. For example, these people that are not paying utility bills, they have no reason to be conservative. They can leave everything on in the house or whatever. There's no need because they're not paying the bill. And this is just interesting. I went at the last commissioner's meeting. The savings from Water and Light customers purchasing 4,560 Energy Star LED bulbs in the month of October, just the month of October. If all those bulbs were used, each year it would save $47,099. And over the time of the light bulb, it would save $7,000. So many of these tenants may not even be using energy-efficient light bulbs. They may be running things 24/7. And it seems to me, I just don't see why. Now, if we're concerned about the landlords that are calling us, you can best rest assured, if this isn't passed, you're gonna have 13,000 property owners calling us wanting to know why are their rates going to be increased because 1,841 are not? And how can I answer that? I'm sorry, we're gonna raise your rates because only 1,841 property owners decide to just forget about it. And so I just want to read this on the bottom of the information you got, just for the public. It says, "Under current PSC service rules, the utility cannot require social security or a driver's license number as requirement for service." They cannot disconnect electricity by landlord's request if the request is to assist in eviction process. They cannot collect a deposit from one class of customers, such as all tenants. And they cannot refuse service if the customer does not have a past due amount. Customer needs to resolve previous past due if it is with the Water and Light Commission. And they cannot disconnect at any time. The PSC protocol must be followed based on past due notification. But if it's passed, this is what the landlord, they talk about, what can the landlords do? If this passed, the landlords can require a utility deposit. So when a person moves in, have a utility deposit. And if they're not paying that one particular month, use the utility deposit. The landlord can require a tenant to put utility service in their name as a lease requirement. The landlord can require the tenant to pay current on the utility bills as part of their lease requirement. And the landlord can put service in their tenant's name. But what I think is, you know, they want to know a compromise. Here's the compromise. If the electric bill is on the tax rule ordinance is approved, landlords obtain the ability to request electric disconnect, not during a moratorium, if the tenant is passed on their, his or her utility bill. So if this is passed and I'm a landlord and my tenant's not paying, I could call you Water and Light and say, disconnect that person. Then I don't have to pay. And it seems to me, that's the compromise. But I do not see why 88% of our property owners have to absorb the cost of 12% of our property owners and raise the rate if this isn't resolved. And this isn't just this year. It's from 13 to 20 years. Water and Light has had this predicament. And so that's where I'm coming from. So I guess you can see how I'm gonna vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean?
Yes. Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I understand some of the things Mr. Kellogg is saying. And I've toyed with this pretty hard from the beginning. This has been the most contentious thing since I've been involved in since my short term. I got about twice as many calls as this that I did on the pool. But as I look through this, there's a couple of things. And so far, I honestly don't think, in the short time we've reviewed this, we talked about it and then we brought it back only a month after we said we'd discuss it longer. I don't think the WWLC has proven they've exhausted all their collection efforts. The situation they find themselves in is resulting in them wanting us to consider only two options. Either they raise the rates on all of us to cover their collection management efforts or pass a bill to the property owner as opposed to the responsible individual who they chose to offer service to. I understand a bill was passed, Wisconsin Act 274. Thanks, Mr. Ramsen, for pointing that number out to us. That does allow WWLC and municipalities to use tax collection and set collection measures for tenants. If they utilize that to the full ability, I need to show that. As far as I'm concerned, they really need to be more selective who they approve for service and more aggressively and diligently managing their own collections. That being said, I'm not only opposed to them adding this to the property owner's tax bill, but I'm also opposed to them raising their taxes to all of us without showing proper justification that they've used every option to collect that money. So the other issue is that the bills don't follow the tenants. So if, what you were just talking about. So if a tenant skips town, has a past due balance, and then the landlord does choose to pay that bill, then he goes and gets another service. Well, there's no past due record because the bill was paid. And so it needs to follow that. So far, I haven't shown that they've done all the efforts. And so if we do this, I will be voting no on this. Thank you.
Scott, did you want to speak again?
Just shortly. Basically, you talk about the tenants are using electricity. Why should they pay for it? That's a business that they got into. When I was a landlord, that's a business I got into. And I made a profit on it. These landlords, if they were making a profit on it, they wouldn't be in business. And so that's why they're making profit. And I don't see why 3,546 are up to date and 1,149 are not. And the other point is, you talked about collecting bills. When a customer, I'll read this, when a customer establishes service, utility request, a driver's license or social security number, that's request. Doesn't mean they have to get it. And then the utility will run information on, in, on online utility exchange, which lets the utility know if a customer owes money to another utility. If the customer owes money, a Wisconsin utility, the utility will request a deposit. So Water and Light, if they find that the tenant moves and they owe money to another utility, they'll request a deposit before they give them the service. So I don't understand this logic, that the idea that the tenants are using it and I own the property and I'm making profit, I'm deducting the profit, deductions and everything else, and I'm making a profit, I'm in business, then I have to take responsibility to run the business. And 3,546 are. I don't see the logic. That's where I'm coming from. Thanks.
This is Alderman Caddan. May I speak?
We will get you into the speaking order. You will be after Thad.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just want to take this opportunity for a quick civics lesson. And not specifically here, but also inclusionary of it, that when it's suggested to look at changes or making changes or making different modifications to agencies or subunits of government, one of the easiest ways of doing that is being on the city council. And very infrequently have I ever tooted my own horn on sitting here, but I also applaud everybody else who's on this council who takes the time, who's now been here after 8:00 PM, and even staff members, everybody else. This is one way because Water and Light is a subunit of the city of Wisconsin Rapids. It's a municipal-owned utility. There are four seats that are gonna be up this round. And then there's gonna be four seats up the next year, and it flip-flops every time. And the four seats that are gonna be up, there's one guaranteed open seat. We know that for sure. And there's three other ones. Aldermanic District 1, 3, 5, and 7 are up for reelection. Nomination papers can be pulled out from December-ish, the beginning of December to about the end of December, January 3rd, I think.
Point of order, Mayor. Point of order, Mayor. Point of order, Mayor. Point of order, Mayor.
What's your point?
Point of order is get on the subject, not what he's ranting about.
I'm the one that's ranting all the time?
Talk about the landlord. If you get off the case, you can talk about anything else.
Yeah, let's talk about ranting all the time, okay?
At the point of order, I'm making a...
Okay, Tom. Thad's got the floor. Go ahead, Thad.
I'm making a point of order, Mayor, and you can rule anybody else you want. You have the right to do that, Mayor. It's a point of order I'm making. We're gonna talk about the subject on hand. That's my point of order. And that's not what upcoming elections are. We're gonna talk about the point of order tonight. That's my... And I'll just say it. That's my point. We're gonna talk about this. If you want to talk politics, come back another night. Put it on your agenda. I'll be glad to do it.
That might be inappropriate, Mr. Raoul. It's a public forum.
Exactly.
No. It's a point of order.
We've allowed you to speak, Tom.
It's all about what's on the agenda. Talk about what's on the agenda. Nothing else.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Thad has the floor.
Yep.
I believe he was talking about what was on the agenda.
Go ahead, Thad.
I guess my train of thought is derailed. I mean, this is amazing. We talk about civil discourse. I guess, am I able, am I out of order to ask if an officer can go visit Mr. Raoul's house and check on him? I actually have a concern. I've got a real strong concern that there's something wrong with him.
Okay. You can ask that all you want.
Am I out of order by asking that? Because I have a concern for his safety right now.
The point of order, the point of order is we talk about what's on the agenda. So it's not whose election's coming up in four or five months or a year after from then. Point of order is we're gonna talk about what's going on of what's on the agenda.
Tom, that's a little out of order. We don't need a name call.
I don't care.
I do. It's my meeting. Thad? Okay, next in line is Jake.
Thank you. So I'll make this short. I would just echo a lot of what the landlord said. They are investors in our community. Apparently, they are not allowed to evict tenants for any reason, even if it is in the least that they do have an excessive water or light bill. And I want to remind everyone that these are not the typical electric bills that they could be taking on. These aren't one-month electric bills, two-month. These could be racked up when COVID started in March. They could continue to go on, and this could be extended into next year. A tenant leaves sometime in 2021, they're stuck with thousands of dollars in bills across all these...
Hey, Tom. Tom. Tom, mute your mic if you're gonna swear, Tom. Thank you.
Your Honor, under Roberts' rules of order, he's been declared out of order. I make a motion to remove him from the meeting.
Hold on, let's let the clerk. Nope, that was Mr. Zerflue. We have a motion by Mr. Zerflue. And seconded by, you want to hit your button, Thad? My motion is to remove Tom from the meeting for being out of order. Let's push the buttons. Let's record it. Please cast your ballots. Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jake, how do you vote?
Aye.
I guess attorney, do we ask Mr. Raoul for a vote or? What's that? Here she is. Ah, you're muted, Sue.
Okay. Actually, I think a more appropriate course would have been for you, Mayor, to make the decision on his removal versus the body. I think you're running the meeting and you would be the one that would request that he be removed and you have that control. And it's not necessarily a vote of the older person. And so I think it's up to you to determine how to have a civil meeting and whether that would be to have him be muted except during the times that he's recognized or to actually be left out of the meeting. I think that's actually your call. And I think that the older persons can give you their thoughts on maybe what should happen, but I think it's actually your call.
Sounds good. I'm ready to make that decision. If you guys are ready to withdraw your motions? If you, are you willing to, Joe?
I'm sorry, Your Honor. I believe I've made the motion. I'll withdraw if that's the attorney's recommendation. I was just under the impression that it's actually the body that decides any type of discipline. But I'll withdraw if that's the advice.
Okay, Thad's given me a thumbs up to withdraw his. And if you'll leave Mr. Raoul muted, he can choose to listen. But, you know, this behavior is unacceptable and it's not something I'm gonna tolerate during my meetings. You know, if you have to spew a bunch of profanity that we have to sit here and endure, I think that's ridiculous and that's out of order. And I'm not tolerated in my meetings, nor should the public have to endure that. And I'll be swifter next time. Okay, let's continue on. Joe, you're up.
Okay, we're on Water and Light now.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it is Jake's turn. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jake. Yeah, we got a little messed up here.
Yeah, that's all right. I'll just make it quick. Just go over a little bit of when I went through, with the COVID restrictions not being able to evict tenants currently, these are not gonna be your typical electric bills of a month or two. These could be racked up over several months, thousands of dollars. This could extend into 2021. These tenants eventually leave. The landlords would be on the hook for these bills. They pay them off, the tenants go to another place, and they start from scratch while they've used electricity for who knows how many months at the end of all this. use electricity for who knows how many months at the end of all this. I appreciate the numbers that Mr. Kellogg brought. I'm not sure that from 2013 to 2020, those would be as relevant as we're in this pandemic. I think those numbers will be completely different. And I would also like to mention that the mill is closing, so we are going to see houses go up for sale. We need these people to continue to invest in our community, and a lot of these houses that go up for sale may be turned into rentals. So leaving them with thousands of dollars in bills where they can invest that into the community or continue to upkeep the properties they already own would be devastating. So I'm totally against this, up devoting and negative on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coth?
I just want to, before I speak, did older person Zerflu have a chance to say everything he needed to say?
Mr. Zerflu, have you...
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Yeah, as long as I have the floor. So I, this is in no way meant to demonize Water Works and Light in any way. They do a very good job for us. I mean, we saw that after the storm, how they responded. They have a very difficult position in this. You know, this isn't an option. I understand why they considered it. I am against this. There are other avenues. At the last meeting, we sent it back to committee. One of the employees told us that they have used the state debt collection through Department of Revenue. I know there, that's not 100%. However, I've talked to other counties that use this for collecting failure to pay fines and stuff on an unrelated matter, and they have great success with it. I know there, you're not going to be able to intercept taxes on everybody, but that is, you know, one option. I'm worried about a couple of different things, such as rent going up and putting even a lot more pressure on an already kind of unstable housing market. There's obviously a demand for rental units especially, and it's hard for people to afford that. And, you know, landlords have to, they have to offset that somehow. It's easier for a municipality to tax intercept. I don't know, landlords have other options, but, you know, you got to take them to court and all this, and I just don't think it's realistic. Those are the reasons I'm against it. I don't, I don't want to pit anything against Water Works and Light. I'm very appreciative of all the staff there, and that's basically just my piece.
Thank you. Jake?
So I'd just like to point out a couple of things. First of all, I think we all realize because of this pandemic, it's made the problem worse. But this isn't a problem that just started today. It's been an ongoing thing. I think if you can ask, I don't, don't hold me to these numbers. Water and Light could probably confirm or deny that, confirm this. But they've been writing off between $100,000 and $150,000 every year and just eating it. I guess the question is, is how long can you continue to run a business and go at that rate? The other thing I would like to point out is there's 82 communities that have publicly-owned utilities in the state, and out of those 82, 78 of them are already doing this. So it must, there must be a way to make this work. Thank you. Steve?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just listening to our discussion tonight, I'm not sure where this will go next or if we're even capable of solving the problems. But I think the problem extends well beyond this issue of just unpaid water and light bills. There was a day in time when people were actually held responsible for their actions. And that's why I say it's probably beyond the scope of this council, because society has gotten so bad that people are not held responsible for their actions anymore. It's sad. It's appalling. It's disgusting. Because just like Scott said about the 88% that has to support this 12%, you're absolutely right, Scott. But when the 88% one way or another has to shoulder the burden of the 12%, the 12% slackers, takers, freeloaders keep doing what they're doing. It is beyond, yeah, I recognize, I recognize that there are legitimately poor people. I've been halfway across the world. I saw legitimately poor people drink water out of a ditch. I've seen people that are literally skin and bones after 30 years of starvation by a dictatorship. I've seen people that live in mud huts. I've seen poor people that are truly in need. You come back to America, yeah, there's, there's people here that are down on their luck. But America is one of the few countries in the world that only have poor people that are fat. Every year, especially around this time of year, charities are out raising money. And I've seen this in America with my own eyes. Give to the poor, help the poor, help the needy, help, help the families that don't have nothing. There's a community close to us that has an organization called Operation Bootstrap, where you're supposed to give stuff to the poor people. I have with my own eyes seen people get a brand-new microwave to cook their meals and take it back to the store and get the cash for it. I'm sure each and every one of us here can think of the situation where we have seen the system being abused. It's sad. It delegitimizes the system that is designed to legitimately help people that need it on their housing, on their heat bill, on their water bill, on their light bill, or just even had to have the ability to buy food. I don't know when responsibility is ever, is ever going to be put back on the people that are incurring the services, the debts. This country has made it so easy, so easy for you to take out your visa, go buy whatever you want to buy, and churn around and file bankruptcy. Buy a car, file bankruptcy. Buy a house, file bankruptcy. Not pay your power bill, walk away from it. And the 88% that Scott talked about in every aspect, on every one of those situations, we are the ones that are paying for the people to do it. Because you think there's ramifications for these people that don't pay their bills? No, because we're just going to, if we tax rule this, water and light's going to be made whole, they can go off, they can go somewhere else. The people that file bankruptcy watch TV at 3:00 a.m. in the morning sometime, just out of bankruptcy, come on down, see us. We'll give you a credit card, day one out of bankruptcy. Why? So they can start all over again and do the same thing. In this, going back to my earlier comments, I really, really, really appreciate the job our Water Works and Lighting crew does. They have a good crew over there, and they provide a good service. And I also appreciate every landlord that takes the time to invest in our city and buy a house and fix it up and rent it out to a good family. I don't want to see either the Water and Light have to write a debt off and pass the rate on to the consumers, or landlords have to, have to suck it up and eat it. It's just, it's just sad. Personal accountability in this country is missing. Respect for authority in this country is missing. Rule of law in this country is missing. And governments and courts just keep enabling the lame and the lazy, the slackers, the freeloaders, the ones that choose to do nothing. I really, really wish that we could find a way, and maybe it's above this council's authority, maybe it has to be something that the state does. But I really would like to see the people responsible bear the burden of their cost. That's all.
Thank you. See nobody else that wishes to speak? Yes, go ahead.
I was just going to say, motions have to be in the affirmative, so I will make a motion to approve them, although I won't be voting in favor.
Thank you. And we have a motion by Zerflu, seconded by Coth to approve the ordinance. I guess I'm just, I asked the attorney a question. Sorry, you just give me a minute. Attorney Schill is updating me that, that I can ask an unruly member of the audience to be removed, but for a member, the chair is supposed to ask him to comply, to stop. And then if he doesn't... Then charges can be filed and decide if there's a penalty. So Mr. Raoul does have the ability to vote. And I guess technically, then, he should have the ability to speak.
I'll make a motion to have charges filed against Mr. Raoul, then.
Well, it's got a, there's a few steps that have to go through. I can read them for you. So for a member of the chair, it's supposed to ask him to comply with that order, stop talking, et cetera. And then if he doesn't comply, then the chair can tell the clerk to record the behavior, and then the chair's names, the chair names the offender and the behavior that is then likely to bring charges, then the body can decide if there is a penalty. Is that correct, Attorney Schill? You're muted. There you go.
They muted me. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I was, when I said that you had the authority, that was for a non-member, for an actual member, then there's certain things that you would need to do in terms of trying to correct the behavior or bringing him into order. And then once, once you've done that, and if you believe he is repeatedly, you know, has not come into order, then, then basically you record, you record the behavior after he has an opportunity to, you know, come to order. And if, after all of that, then you basically call out the behavior and, and have the body then decide what they might want to do. I guess I, in this instance, I, you know, I guess I, I think that since he's, you know, muted, I think he could, you know, still participate, although I guess now could, would be the opportunity for if someone wants to, if you believe that you want to pursue something further than that the penalty would be, would else, would actually be for the body. So I apologize for being in air on that earlier.
Nope, no problem. It's kind of a new experience for everybody.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Nope. Mr. Zerflu, did you have...
I don't have my usual books in front of me.
No problem. Mr. Zerflu, did you have something?
Uh, no, I, I was just saying, thanks for the advice.
I guess in order of moving things on, I guess I'm kind of not sure how to proceed. However, I guess if Mr. Raoul wants to conduct himself properly and wants to say something, I would say you can have the floor to address this issue. So I'll give you that opportunity, and then if not, then we can go on to a vote. Yeah, he is.
I call for a question.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to adopt the Water and Light ordinance. No further discussion while the question was called. Seeing nothing further, please cast your ballots. Mr. Zerflu?
Nay.
Mr. Raoul, do you want to vote? Mr. Raoul, do you want to vote? I'll ask one more time. Mr. Raoul, you want to vote? Uh, Mr. Catnau?
Nay.
Attorney Schill, would he abstain, then? Would that be an abstention, or... Yeah, by choice.
By choice.
Right, if he does not vote, that would be, he's abstaining for the vote, assuming he's still just been in the meeting.
Yep. Okay. If you log on abstention. Motion failed for, well, three As and four Ns and one abstention. So this was the first reading. It's, so it'll come back a second time next month for a second vote. Thank you. Let me find my agenda. All right. Next item on the agenda is the Public Works Committee meeting held the 3rd and the 10th. I guess Mr. Raoul is no longer participating. We can have the secretary read that.
That would be... All right, Public Works meeting of November 3rd, 2020. The Public Works Committee was scheduled to meet on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020 via video conference. Meeting was not held due to lack of forum. And it brings us to the Public Works meeting held on November 10th. The Public Works Committee meeting on Tuesday, November 10th, was held via video conference. Tom Raoul, Jake Catnau, Dean Veneman were present. Others attending are on file in the clerk's office. Item 1, call to order. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 p.m. Item 2, review the DPW report. The DPW report was reviewed. Item 3, review mill and overlay maintenance procedure and project selection criteria. The mill and overlay maintenance procedure and project selection criteria was reviewed. Item 4, review One Mile Creek impoundment Phase 2 community meeting and consider options for stormwater management. Motion by Raoul to repair lower dam and dredge lower pound of One Mile Creek impoundment at Two Mile Ave. there was no second. Motion by Catnau, seconded by Veneman, to place this item on the Public Works referral list. Motion carried 2-1 with Raoul voting in the negative. Item 5, review current snow and ice control policy. Snow and ice control policy was provided for reference. This item will be placed on the referral list to review and update in the near future. Item 6, review survey responses for funding options to offset street construction and maintenance costs. Motion by Veneman, seconded by Catnau, to direct staff to repair an RFP and solicit proposals to aid in the development of a transportation utility plan and financial evaluation with considerations described in the referral. Motion carried 3-0. Item 7, consider purchase right-ofway to facilitate reconstruction of Jefferson Street east of 25th Avenue. Motion by Raoul, seconded by Catnau, to approve the purchase of the right-ofway to facilitate the reconstruction of Jefferson Street. Motion carried 3-0. Item 8, consider deviation of municipal code to avoid installing sidewalk on 18th Ave. South between K Street, Clark Street. Motion by Veneman, seconded by Raoul, to design 18th Avenue south without sidewalks between K Street, Clark Street. Motion carried 2-1 with Catnau voting in the negative. Item 9, adjournment. Motion by Veneman, seconded by Raoul, to adjourn. Motion carried 3-0. Meeting was adjourned at 7:05 p.m. And with that, I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Mr. Catnau, seconded by Mr. Kubich. We have a motion by Mr. Katna, seconded by Mr. Kubashak. Thank you for filling in. Is there any discussion on the report? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. There we go. Mr. Zerflu?
Aye.
Mr. Raome, do you care to vote? I'll ask a second time. How do you wish to vote on the motion, Mr. Raome? And lastly, how do you wish to vote on the motion? Okay, Mr. Katna?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven As and one abstention. Uh, work to you, Mr. Kubashak, HR report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Meeting of the Human Resources Committee was held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020 at 4:30 PM via remote video conferencing originating from City Hall Council chambers. Members present were Kubashak and Bemke, also President Mayor Blazer, Ryan Hartman, City Attorney Sushil, Joe Terry, Paul Waller, and a list of attendees is on file with the clerk's office. Item number one, call to order. Meeting was called to order by Chairperson Kubashak at 4:37 PM. Item number two, discuss and consider for approval wage adjustments for internal equity purposes for four administrative positions within the police department. Motion by Kubashak, seconded by Bemke to approve as presented wage adjustments for four administrative positions within the police department. Motion carried 2 to 0. Excuse me. Item number three, discuss and consider for approval new position of Parks and Recreation Coordinator to replace the Parks and Recreation Administrative Assistant position along with compensation, job description approval. Motion by Kubashak, seconded by Bemke was carried to approve a new position of Parks and Recreation Coordinator to replace the Parks and Recreation Administrative Assistant and approve as presented to the job description and compensation. Motion carried 2 to 0. Item number four, discuss and consider for approval the addition of a second street supervisor position within Department of Public Works along with compensation, job description. Motion by Kubashak, seconded by Bemke to approve an additional street supervisor position within Department of Public Works and approve as presented the job description and compensation. Motion carried 2 to 0. Item number five, discuss and consider for approval a non-union general employee wage increase for 2021. Motion by Kubashak, seconded by Bemke was carried to approve a 2.5% wage increase for 2021 for non-union general employees. Motion carried 2 to 0. Item number six, adjournment. Motion by Kubashak, seconded by Bemke to adjourn. Motion was carried 2 to 0. Meeting adjourned at 4:50 PM. And unless I hear any suggestions or any requests to hold out any items, I'll make a motion for the approval of this consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second to approve this agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Uh, Mr. Zerflu?
Aye.
Ask Mr. Raome. Do you care to vote on the motion for a second time? Do you care to vote on the motion for a third time? Do you care to vote on the motion? Uh, Mr. Katna?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven As and one abstention. Next item is reports of other committees, commissions, or board department reports. What are your wishes?
I make a motion to have them placed on file in the clerk's office.
Thank you. We have a motion to have them placed on file by Mr. Kubashak, seconded by Mr. Veneman. Any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Mr. Sarsky Finance Director. I'd just like to, we completed the roster recovery grants, a submittal today, and we submitted $386,000, of which we have a $355,000 allocation. But I just want to bring this up because I want to give recognition to the town of Saratoga that allocated, they got an allocation of $51,000, and they, under the DOA's rules, they allocated that to us, and we used that to purchase a cot lifter, a power cot lifter for ambulance that's dedicated to COVID, and the rest of it will go towards funding the radios for the fire department. So I just wanted to give some recognition to the town of Saratoga, and thanks for allocating that money towards us.
Thank you for bringing it up, Mr. Sarsky. Yeah, it was a very nice thing. They could have turned it back into the state, and since we do provide service to them, it was a very nice gesture. Any further discussions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I guess on that note, can, next meeting, we have either, I don't know, I, my train of thought has derailed completely, but what is that called, where you, you recognize Saratoga officially then for that as a recognition?
Like a resolution. Resolution, recognize the Saratoga. I'd like that for the next council meeting. Thank you.
Sounds good. All right. Seeing none, let's, well, let's cast our ballots to vote on the reports. Mr. Zerflu?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Raome, do you care to vote? Second time, do you care to vote, Mr. Raome? And do you wish to vote on the motion for a third time? Uh, Mr. Katna?
Aye.
Was that aye? Okay, thank you. We have seven As.
Yep, aye.
Okay, thank you. Seven As, one abstention. To the, do we have any referrals for committees?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would like to ask Mr. Kubashak if he would entertain the idea of having a committee of the whole meeting for perhaps a council discussion on COVID to see if there's any other mandates that come down from the state of how we wish to go and proceed, if we need to look like anything Wassa is doing, or just, just to see if it's worth a discussion at an informal council setting for the direction of how things are going.
Absolutely. If, especially if you want to get the information on that. I'll nominate you as special ad hoc committee COVID chairperson for the next committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a referral.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, for the legislative committee, I know we already have options and stuff, but I would like them just to revisit standards of conduct. I'm very embarrassed by what happened tonight, and I don't think it should happen. So I would just like them to address that and maybe, I don't know, put something out or however they want to handle it.
Sounds good. I agree, and even to expound on that a little bit, Mr. Kubashak and I have talked about maybe adopting some general rules of council. Sometimes some things come into question on how we operate, and that might be a good time to address some of that also. Is there any other?
Mr. Mayor, I do apologize.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do apologize to the people in attendance.
Thank you, and I agree, and this cannot happen. We need to conduct ourselves professionally, especially in the public, businesses, people from other communities are watching how we conduct ourselves, and we can be passionate, but disrespectful we cannot be. Last item on the agenda is adjourned, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Bemke.
I'm just, I just want to double check that we got, I do have a referral in for Public Works for that project out on Grove. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion by Kubashak to adjourn.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Coth. A motion is second to adjourn. I guess let's do all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Excellent. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.